Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday morning meeting, October 8th, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Tom's left is Brandy Spangler. She'll be taking care of us today. Thank you, Brandy. To my right, Commissioner Candace Payne. To her right, Deputy County Attorneys Nico Hash and Keegan Shea. Good morning, gentlemen. And our Chief Administrative Officer, Roger Baltz. Good morning, Roger. There are agendas in the front as well as a sign-in sheet. We'd like everyone to sign in prior to leaving our meeting today, so we have a good record of who's attended. And we will go from there. We don't have any consent action items today, Mr. Baltz, so we'll jump right in. Item number three on the agenda is Resolution 2024-109 to create the Field Cross Scratch Gravel Rural Improvement District Number 2024-7. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today is the public hearing regarding Resolution 2024-109 to create the Field Cross Scratch Gravel Rural Improvement District to improve and maintain Scratch Gravel Drive, Field Cross Lane, and Hannah Lane. The proposed district is located just to the west of Green Meadow Drive and just north of Norris Road. The resolution of intention to create the Field Cross Scratch Gravel RID was passed by the Commission on August 27th, 2024, after receiving a petition that was signed by 57% of property owners within the proposed district. There are 42 properties included in the proposed district boundary. Improvements to be funded by the district include the installation of asphalt aprons and chip seal surfacing at the transitions between Scratch Gravel Drive, Field Cross Lane, Hannah Lane, as they intersect with Green Meadow Drive. It will also include drainage remediation and culvert installation throughout the district, the addition of gravel surfacing throughout the road network, and watering, grading, and compaction of the new road material. Financing of these improvements is estimated to total $112,987. Each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a 15-year debt service assessment of $277 per year. The general character of maintenance will include snow plowing and sanding, grading, gravel maintenance, asphalt apron maintenance with patching and chip sealing, and other maintenance as needed to preserve the road improvements. Annual maintenance is estimated to total $6,068 per year, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a maintenance assessment of $145 per year. The total proposed assessment is $422 per property per year for the first 15 years, and then dropping to the maintenance assessment after the debt is repaid. Upon passage of the resolution of intention to create the district on August 27th, notice of the intention to create the district in today's public hearing was mailed to each property owner, and a 30-day comment and protest period was opened to the public. Legal notice was also published in the Helena Independent Record on Saturday, August 31st and Saturday, September 7th, 2024. The comment and protest period closed on Friday, October 4th. One protest was received for a total of 2.3% of the district benefiting properties. Therefore, there is not sufficient protest to bar proceedings today. If the Field Cross Scratch Gravel RID is created, it is anticipated that a resolution to levy and assess the RID will be brought before the Commission later this fall. Because we have missed the September deadline to get on the next tax bill, this RID would be assessed starting with the November 2025 tax bill. In addition, we would also present a loan application to the Montana Board of Investments to fund an intercap loan for the initial construction. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2024-109 to create the Field Cross Scratch Gravel Rural Improvement District, and I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioner, at this point? I just want to talk about process. You went through it very quickly, but just to make sure that we're in full understanding. First of all, this was brought to us by the citizens, or a group of citizens, 57% or so, that have signed the petition asking for us to move forward with these proceedings?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's correct. A group of citizens from this district came to the Public Works Office with the intent to create an RID. We had a meeting at the Public Works Office to talk about all of those details in person, and then we moved forward with the petition, and that petition was circulated by the property owners. And again, as you stated, 57% signed in support of the district being created.
So then we hold a hearing, which is the intention hearing, and we pass a resolution there to of intent to create the district, correct? And then 30 days of comment and protest period follows that.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. So the petition process is a part of our Lewis and Clark County policy. And from there, you know, once we have a determination of how much public support we have, we take that to the initial public hearing, which is that resolution of intention to create the district. And that's the process that's outlined in statute. Upon passage of that, that's what triggers that 30-day comment protest period. It actually starts when the mailing is sent and that first publication is published in the newspaper. And so that's what starts that 30-day comment and protest period. Again, by statute, it must be published twice in a 70-day period, and that mailing has to go out to everybody. That mailing includes the details of the district, as I've explained today. It also includes the date and time for this public hearing, where you'll consider the creation of the district.
And thus far, we've had one protest?
Mr. Chair, that's right. On Friday, we did receive one protest. And with 42 benefiting properties, that comes out to about 2.3% total protest. Again, by statute, if we receive greater than 50% protests during that comment and protest period, by statute, again, we cannot move forward with creation. If we receive less than 50%, it's up to the Commission whether or not to create the district before you today.
Okay. Thank you for going over it again with me, just so people understand that might be interested. Any questions at this point, Commissioners? Any further questions? Okay, so this is a public hearing, and we want to hear what people have to say. So for those that aren't used to doing this, if you have, if you want to address the Commission, just come to the microphone one at a time and state your name, and if you live in the district, and let us know what you're thinking. Help us make a better decision. So is there any public testimony, any public comment? Any public comment? Welcome.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Capri Byrne. I live at 6875 Scratch Gravel Drive, one of the benefiting properties of the district. Myself and four of the other property owners are the ones who went around and tried to gain signatures and support for the petition, so I'm here to speak on behalf of those who were in support. This neighborhood is approximately 20 years old. The last road maintenance was done on a piece of Field Cross Lane, and that was organized nine years ago by Paul Newble, who went door-to-door to get support and commitment from people who said they would pay. And then he organized getting a contractor to come out and do the road. He paid for it, and then he had to go again, door-to-door, to collect compensation. Not everyone who said they would pay paid, you know. It's just not feasible going forward for a road network this big, for 42 properties, for one homeowner to take that upon themselves and do that every few years. It's just financially not, you know, and timewise not feasible. So that's why we're asking you to create the district today. After 20 years, some of the roads, especially Hannah Lane, are in pretty poor condition and really need updated. So, and I also just want to thank Jessica Makas. I think a lot of us put off this process for a long time because we thought it'd be really difficult and confusing and a lot of hoops to jump through, but she's really made it very clear, very easy to understand, and we just appreciate her. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment. Appreciate it. Further public comment? Please, just come forward, whoever wants to go next. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. My name is Ann Perry.
You can pull that closer if you want.
I'm not used to doing this.
No worries.
My name is Ann Perry, and I work, I live in the district. I live at the corner of Hannah Lane and Green Meadow. I did not have anybody come to my door to even know that this was happening until maybe in July, I guess, maybe two months ago. And I was told that, you know, if you don't want this, this is the way I took it. If you don't want this, too bad. If 50% of the district wants it, then you have to pay. My concern is those that are not financially able. It's one more thing. I have lived in my home for 10 years. My house payment has gone up every year because of taxes and insurance. And I just want to speak for those that may not financially be able to take on one more thing. I don't care. If it's 50% that wants it, that's what it's going to be. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Further public comment? Good morning.
Mike Bluecurt, 11 Field Cross Lane. I have several properties in the said region. I'm in favor of certainly going ahead with the RID. I guess my personal concern is, I don't even know if it's possible, but the speed is, there's a lot of children along the road there. There'll be more. I just wondered, folks, if we could possibly have a, I don't know, 20 mile an hour speed limit there. Not that it'll do any good, but it's my only concern. And I thank you for everything here, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Bluecurt. And if there are questions, at the end of all the public comment, we'll try and answer questions best we can. Good morning.
Fellow Commissioners, I'm Darren McLean. I live at 50 Hannah Lane. It's probably the worst road in the district. It's like a four-by-four trail now. It's never had any maintenance. I support this district being formed. I think it'll help maintain the roads and help the neighborhood. I also support the speed limit, too. They go pretty fast in that neighborhood. I'm always out there. You know, people are driving 50, 60 miles an hour on their road through neighborhood with kids, so I support that, too.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there any other public comment? Any further public comment? Any further public comment? All right, we're going to close public comment at this time. Jessica, maybe we'll have you come back up. I don't know if there are any questions that you can answer. The speed limit question, I think we might tag-team that if we need to. I don't know. It's an interesting one on streets like these, but.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, as far as the speed, this is a common question. I get this probably weekly in districts and roads throughout the county, and this is a difficult one. As part of this improvement, we will sign this at 25 miles per hour. That's the lowest by statute that we can go. That statute is based on, I believe, on density of housing, and whether it's 35 or 25 in residential areas. And unfortunately, that's our limitation, but by putting those regulatory signs up, you know, it is possible then to enforce speed. One of the other challenges is, once, you know, once we do those road improvements, once those roads are in good shape, sometimes that makes people drive even faster, and that can be challenging as well. You know, I encourage people to reach out to law enforcement where we're possible, but also, unfortunately, speed is speed. And we can put up residential signs. We can put up, you know, speed limit signs to do our best to make sure that it's signed appropriately for these areas. And hopefully, people will take that into consideration as they're driving these roads, but that's always a challenging one for us, but certainly it will be signed at least.
That was well answered. I don't know that we can add much to it, but typically, and if this neighborhood is similar to others, those that are usually the speeding violators are the people that live there. So it is one of those things where neighbors need to talk to neighbors. And if you do have some sort of organized group where you try to do things, that would be one of the things that you need to talk about. Of course, if it's pretty egregious, then the sheriff's office needs to be engaged. But there's no magic to it, and it is very typical that when roads are improved, people feel safer to go faster. So it is kind of one of those, one of those things that, yeah, an anodrum. So, yes. Commissioners, yes, please. Commissioner Payne?
Jessica could, recent, and I've talked to people about putting in speed bumps. I understand it is not good for snow removal days, but they also, I think it's at Bowman's Corner. We recently put in a series of slowdown or you're dead kind of, and I don't know what that's called. But it doesn't appear to me to be the potential snowplow issue if they're not big bumps, but they are big enough so they get people's attention. Can't we use a series of those to remind people? This could save, you know, my grandchild life. This is important. What can we do?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, I completely recognize the, you know, the suggestion of speed bumps. Speed bumps are challenging, though, and again, as a mother of young children who lives on a street also, I appreciate the concern certainly of young children in the road and being in conflict with speeding drivers. I absolutely, wholeheartedly recognize that. Speed bumps are not something that we generally permit in our Public Works manual. They are, these are gravel roads as well. There's really no, gravel roads are not really conducive to adding speed bumps. And additionally, it's not something that could be effectively maintained. I think, you know, the way that we address this is signage and regulatory signage at that.
Thank you.
So you wouldn't recommend the neighbors recognizing who is doing this, and then they go up, knock on the door and say, "What in the heck are you doing driving that fast?", or even threatening to, like, let the air out of their tires if they don't change their behavior. Now, that wouldn't destroy the tires. But, you know, you get one warning, and then the second time, there's going to be repercussions. And I know that my lawyer buddies over there are going to say, "Don't be encouraging that stuff, Candace. Never mind."
Thank you for the "never mind" part. I really appreciate that. Never mind. But encouraging neighbors to talk with neighbors is really a good thing. So that part, I'm with you on. Anything, Commissioner Rolfe?
Mr. Chair, I recognize the concern about taxes, and we are working hard to keep from raising taxes. And I think you'll find that going forward, the portion that the county is responsible for, the taxes aren't going to be changed much. There are a few items like RIDs where people ask them to be added on. There are some voted levies, whether it's for schools and/or for the detention center that the people have asked for, had for, to be added on to their taxes. But I understand that frustration, and we're working hard not to raise taxes any more than we we absolutely have to, to maintain the services that people expect. I thought it was really interesting that Ms. Barney, I believe it was, mentioned about people not paying when they'd agreed to, when it was a voluntary thing. And this, that's fairly common, when people kind of do an informal gathering to maintain a road, and then everybody says, "Yeah, I'll do it", and then sometimes that doesn't happen. And this is a way to make, to make sure that everybody pays their part, because it does increase the value of the home to, and the lots that are available. They do get higher value because of having a well-maintained road in front of them. And it's a positive thing for the whole neighborhood. So, understanding the concern about taxes, we're working hard to keep from raising taxes. And there are other sources of taxation that are having more, far more effect and impact on taxes than county government. We typically, like I say, they're only about 25 to 30% of our property tax bill is for operating county government. So we're trying, and we're trying to control that portion of it. I'm going to vote in favor of this, and because I think it's the right thing to do for that neighborhood, and a majority of the people want it.
Commissioner, thank you for your explanation. I really appreciate that. And we do get the dubious honor of collecting all the property taxes, but as Commissioner Rolfe said, only about 25% of your property tax goes to running the county. And then there are those voted things like this. It's one of the things that would be added to the tax bill for this neighborhood, because if it gets approved here, and it is on behalf of the citizens that brought it forward. So it's a challenging thing. I, just one second, I just appreciate the, I appreciate the, some people may not be able to afford this, or maybe on fixed incomes, and that's why we take at least two, three months to go through this process, so that they have ample opportunity to bring their concerns forward and talk to us. And we've had only one person come forward with a protest concern. And then what we heard today was in favor of it, but concerned about those people that might not be able to afford it. So, yeah, it is challenging. It is a very difficult, I'll say, tax time in our history. But when something comes forward like this, where the citizens of a neighborhood are organizing to try to take care of their own infrastructure, I generally will support that. And you had more you wanted to add to that?
Mr. Chair, to your and Commissioner Rolfe's comments about the process of adding this assessment, I just wanted to speak briefly on our budgeting process and how we administer these RIDs over time. So this is the second step in RID creation. This is when the RID will actually be created. There would be a second round of legal notice that would go out to actually levy and assess this district, which is the resolution that also has to go before you in public hearing to begin the process of assessing this assessment. The staff that we have with RID program, we look at these budgets every year, once a district is created, and primarily those maintenance budgets. We have an estimate here for what we imagine that this intercap loan will cover for the initial improvements, what we'll have to borrow for these initial improvements. I do want to just state that we do estimate these on the higher side, and sometimes, just because the RID process can take so long. You know, can take, you know, generally at least six months to create a district. And so we don't know how those prices may necessarily change over time. And specifically for this district, even though we'll be able to create it, levy and assess it, we're looking at probably at a next spring, summer for actual construction improvement. So there's a long time there. When we do actually draw down those, that loan and start that loan, we use the actual cost of construction. So we compile all of those invoices for the actual cost of construction, and that is the debt. So I can't say that it would necessarily go down, but we do only pull that loan for the actual construction cost. And then when we continue to maintain those improvements over time, the staff look at those maintenance budgets, look at the revenue coming in, the expenditure going out, and we look at those each year. We have to continue to send legal notice once a year and pass, in again, public hearing, once a year, a resolution to levy and assess these districts, even if there is no change. So there is a continual public process with the future administration of these districts. We are, you know, there is a notice that goes out at least once a year, letting people know what they're going to continue to pay, and with information on how to, again, get in touch with staff if there's any future questions about that. And also, you know, this particular district will not start, you know, assessing until about a little over a year from now for what it's worth.
November 2025.
Exactly.
Okay. Commissioners, any further questions, please?
I just have a comment. So this, the assessments, this $422 per property per year, they know this is coming. This is not a surprise. And so if they budgeted a certain amount every month and put it aside, and say the money they would normally use for, oh, fancy coffee, you know, eight bucks a day for 30 days adds up, and you could put that aside and make it more affordable, so you could pay for having the benefit of having a nice road. It isn't like this is going to take food out of your mouth. You know it. It's going to happen. You can plan for it. It's kind of like planning for winter. Okay. Let's be reasonable. Property owners and stewards recognize we've got a responsibility, not only to ourselves, but to our neighbors, to do this sort of thing, to provide appropriate resources for the entire community to use and benefit from. And I'm not real fast on my feet with math, but I'll bet 422 divided by 12 turns out to be, you know, not an awful lot per month to set aside. So this is not a surprise. Thanks.
Anything else?
Jessica? No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else from the Commission? Okay. I guess I'll ask the last question, just process. So if this is approved today, then what's the next step, next phase? We know that it won't be on the tax bill till 2025, but there is a loan process and all of that. So just describe that if, quickly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's great. So the next step, if it were to go through today, we would send an additional legal notice to every benefiting property owner of the district, informing them of that levy, that assessment. So both the debt portion and the ongoing maintenance piece, that would be in a legal notice that goes out. It will also have the publication requirements, and it will also include a future public hearing date in this room, you know, 9:00 AM on a Tuesday or Thursday, where we'll have, again, a public hearing to consider the resolution to levy and assess the district. If that is passed, at that point, once the district is created and levied and assessed, we can move forward with an application to the Montana Board of Investments for an intercap loan. We have to have all of those steps completed ahead of time, because all of those resolutions and then affidavits of publication for the notice have to be included as additional information when we apply for those loans. So we would apply for that, and once that loan is approved, that's when we could then begin the construction process. My guess is, once that occurs, we'll probably be a little too far into fall to consider improvements for this. This year will certainly be far past the deadline for any kind of asphalt on those aprons. The deadline for that is always October 31st. Just, it's very weather dependent. Anyway, that being said, we'll apply, and as soon as we are able to work in the district, that construction project will be planned, likely in the spring or summer of next year.
Thank you. Okay. Without further questions, Commissioners, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-109?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, it approved Resolution 2024-109, a resolution to create the Field Cross Scratch Gravel Rural Improvement District Number 2024-7. Commissioners, further discussion? I just want to thank you, Jessica, as well, and all the folks that came out and gave feedback, those that went around and gathered signatures as well. Again, I am very appreciative of communities or neighborhoods that take responsibility for their own roads and infrastructure and organize like this. It is to the benefit of all that live there, I believe. So thank you very much. Commissioners, with that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Appreciate it, everyone, for being here. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Power DMS. Good morning, Cap.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Today, for your consideration...
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, today for your consideration, I'm Captain Brian Robinson with the Sheriff's Office. I oversee the Patrol Division and the Criminal Investigations Division. Today for your consideration, I have the contract with Power DMS for an application called Power Line Wellness App. So this is the start of our project that we create, that we started this year to improve employee access to mental health and wellness in the Sheriff's Office. Several months ago, I presented in front of the commission for consideration to apply for a grant. And I shared some stories that I personally experienced while working for the past, oh, almost twenty-five years now with the Sheriff's Office. Over the course of a twenty-year career, the average law enforcement officer experiences over eight hundred and fifty traumatic events. That is quite a bit. I would like to say that we have done a good job in helping our employees deal with the mental health and stressors of the job. But the reality is those services really haven't been in existence for a long time. A lot of the services that we had available, we were talking to coworkers. And back in the day, there was a stigma about mental health where if something was bothering you, you didn't say anything. Unfortunately, over the course of several years, those things pile up. And at one point, it either will come out in anger, which could lead to use of force incidents. It could lead to alcoholism. It could lead to gambling. It could lead to drug abuse, which could lead to a loss of a very good employee. So we're trying to take a proactive approach and get ahead of the game. So what this contract will do, it'll allow us to download, employees to download an application on their smartphone device. It'll allow them to access it. They can take self-assessment surveys to see how they're dealing with resiliency, sleep, emotions, anger, all sorts of different issues. And depending on how they score, the application will refer them to a variety of articles, trainings, something that they can read on their own, so they can better understand what is going on with them and how they can deal with their emotions. In addition to that, this program will offer a one-on-one counseling service. You can be matched with another law enforcement officer about the same rank somewhere in the United States, where you can have a one-on-one text message session or a one-on-one voice conversation with that person, hopefully allow them to share some advice on how to deal with the emotions. In addition to the one-on-one, this, this program will offer group therapy sessions for officers to join group therapy from officers that are in the group from all across the United States, where they can share their experiences and hopefully that they can learn how to deal with the emotions. This contract, yes, it is quite expensive. It is four thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the first year. Now that will cover all employees of the Sheriff's Office, their families and all current retirees that we have at the Sheriff's Office. So it will cover a vast variety of people. That contract will run, will run from October first through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So October first of this year, yes, I realize we're past that date, and then September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Then there will be an automatic renewal for the second year, beginning October first, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. That price is a little bit less at three thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. After the second year, we're going to do some evaluation to see whether or not we are going to continue with the program because it is very expensive. And we want to make sure that it is being utilized. I did bring some members with us. I brought Jason Crum, who is a member of our peer support. I don't know if he has anything to add. And as always, Captain Kevin Wright, he just loves to come over and show his shining face. I will be willing to answer any questions that you have because I'm sure there's a lot of them.
Thank you, Captain. How about questions, commissioners? Commissioner Payne?
Hey, good morning. Do you have a copy of the document in front of you?
This one?
The one I'm looking, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And I know this is just picky stuff, but devil's in the details. Okay. Under, at the top of the page, it says contract records. And over on the right-hand side, it says order details, order number, and then it says valid until twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. How can it be valid? I mean, it, I, I'm just questioning that date.
I believe that was their quote for the services. The quote was valid until that date.
You're so smart. Thank you.
I think.
I, that makes sense.
That's how it reads to me.
It's a quote. Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Oh, the other thing, is this included in the law enforcement, in the sheriff's budget?
Yes, Commissioner, we decided to take a proactive approach and not depend on the potential grants. We put this money aside on our own accord, so we had it available for our employees.
Perfect. Thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Rolfe, anything you want to?
I, it just seems to me like you're making, like you say, a proactive approach to, to the mental health of, of the folks that, that are involved in and, and, and see some pretty traumatic events. Your, the numbers that you gave for your own career amaze me. But I guess I'm, I shouldn't be surprised when you, when we think of some of the things that you have to deal with. Thank you for, for being proactive and taking care of the folks to the work for our county.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Commissioner. Really important topic. And as you described, it, it, it's a, it's kind of unbelievable to the layperson, if you will, term it that way. It's outside of law enforcement, the number of traumatic experiences that, that you see, whether it's a wreck or a shooting or whatever it might be, there are just so many things that you're seeing on a regular basis. And unless we address the mental health side of things, as you said, we're going to have people that either burn out, stress out, turn to other self-medication, whether that's, like you said, gambling or drugs or whatever it might be. So this is, this is really important topic and a really important thing. And I'm glad that law enforcement agencies across our country are really starting to address it more fully. And so this is, I would also say, and I, I don't want to minimize the amount that you're, that you're proposing here, but four thousand dollars to cover that many people for an entire year and to have access to these kinds of things that might save a law enforcement person's life or save a career, it's money well invested in our people. And we want people to be here for the long term. We want them to be competent and healthy and all of those things. So it's part of staying healthy. So I, I would just say that it's, it's probably investment well, well spent for the folks that are going to be experiencing things. And I like the idea of the group thing as well. Because even when I imagine myself, you know, if I had a traumatic experience, I did some one-on-one stuff or online stuff, I still don't experience that, you know, kind of discussion with other people that have gone through the same things that I have. So I think that the group portion, that's very impactful and important. I guess that's coming from my, my behavioral health background, those kinds of things, being able to talk about these experiences to other people. So I commend the Sheriff's Office for bringing this forward and I'm happy to support it. I think it's important.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else, commissioners? How about public comment on this item? How about public comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Power DMS, as explained by Captain Brian Robinson.
Second?
Moved in second to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion, commissioners? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Guardian Alliance Technologies, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, thank you again, Captain Brian Robinson with the Sheriff's Office for your consideration today. I have a contract between Guardian Alliance Technologies for their background investigation software. So just to kind of give you a little history, between the detention center and the Sheriff's Office sworn side, and I don't know why we always divide it that way, but we seem to. This year alone, the numbers that I have of employees that are still currently working, we've had at least ten hires. We've had four on the sworn side and at least six on the detention center side that are still, still employed. I know there have been some detention folks that were hired, got into the job and then decided that it wasn't for them. So each one of those people goes through an extensive background check. We have probably twelve certified background investigators within the Sheriff's Office, and they comprise of either sworn deputies or detention officers. Those backgrounds can typically take anywhere from two weeks to three weeks to complete. It is a quite lengthy process. It's all done by paper. It's very archaic when we're trying to move into the future. So what this software is going to do, it's going to provide us an online service where all of our records will be stored in the, in the cloud, again, somewhere, so it can be accessed by anybody. Because right now, if I do a background investigation, typically that file has to stay with me because it's confidential. So anytime I go anywhere, if I leave, I either have to lock it up in a cabinet or it has to stay in my possession. So if another background investigator is going to work on it, either has to find me to get access to it or it's just, he's just going to have to sit or she's going to have to sit and wait, which our hiring process takes quite a long time. So we're trying to be more efficient. We're trying to use the funds from the taxpayers a little bit more efficiently. This will allow us to store everything in the cloud. It'll allow, allow us to automate some processes. It'll keep track of people that have applied to our agency before. It'll also allow us access to the Guardian Alliance network. So any other agency across the United States, let's say we have a lateral transfer from Kentucky that applies with us, it'll check that database. And it'll say, hey, John Smith applied with the Kentucky State Police back in two thousand seventeen and he was disqualified. So it'll provide us more tools in case the applicant isn't forthcoming on the questionnaire that they fill out for us. So I, I, the, the pricing is dependent on agency size. So we're in the one hundred to one hundred and ninety-nine total personnel, which is basically a thousand dollars a year. And then every applicant that we move into the background phase, their report costs sixty-five dollars a, a person. So I did my best to kind of guesstimate of how many backgrounds I anticipated for this budget year that we're currently in. So I estimated we would probably do twenty between the detention center, the sworn side and any civilian staff that we might hire. So I did budget it appropriately for that extra sixty-five bucks a person times twenty, and I'm not good on math either. So, so I, somewhere around two thousand.
Call Captain Wright up here to calculate.
Call Captain Wright. He's good at the math section. So I did budget it anticipating we would at least use this service this year and have twenty background investigations. So there is money there for that. And I did budget a thousand dollars for the access to this service. So I hope you consider and, and approve this. I really think it'll help our background investigators. One thing I, I should mention is every time that we assign somebody to do a background, it, it does take them away from their normal job duties. So if I have a detention, detention employee do a background, they get pulled offline. As we know, the detention center is very short-staffed right now. So anything that we can do to speed up this process and automate this process would be very much appreciated.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, this, this is information that unless a person was applying for a job or, or a promotion or something, probably wouldn't be on the public record, I'm, I'm guessing in many cases. Is there sufficient security to protect people from just random searches?
Yes, we had IT speak directly with their IT and they talked the language and they, and our IT is satisfied with all the responses that they got. This is completely confidential and is serviced in the, the government web cloud that they have. So it has all the protections of all the government sites that we normally have.
Thank you.
Good question, Commissioner. Thank you. Any other questions, please? Commissioner Payne?
I'm, we receive warnings about making sure our, our data is secure and the information that is gathered on these potential employees and it is saved into the cloud. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there is no question in anybody's mind that a cloud is secure and those bad guys across the ocean will not take it and use it to influence our elections or whatever it is they're supposed to be doing. It just, I'm, I'm very concerned about the privacy of the information gathered in furtherance of getting these people hired.
As, yes, or last week I had the privilege of attending the IT steering committee meeting. And as IT said, nothing is ever one hundred percent secure.
I was afraid of that.
Yep. The, the government, you know, web cloud is, is secure as you can get right now with technology. It's something that the federal government uses. It's things that the state uses. It's, it's, we have products right now that use that cloud service. I can't say that it will ever be hacked because nothing is ever a hundred percent secure. But I do have the full confidence in, in that service and I trust when IT tells me that they feel comfortable with it, that we can move forward.
One more. Do we have insurance for this? I'm just thinking, if we get sued by someone who didn't get hired and they're, they're saying their data has been breached, do we have some kind of overarching insurance to say, these guys will pay for it?
So that was, that was another topic that came up during the IT steering committee. And I know that was a question that IT specifically asked of the company, whether or not they had insurance. And she was satisfied with the response that she got. Those responses weren't shared with me, so I don't know exactly what they said, but she was satisfied.
As long as somebody has thought about it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Anything else? All right. How about public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. And I just say, we have, if, if Captain Wright comes, we have to give him a hard time in some way, shape or form. So that's.
The clock is ticking. You don't have much time left.
Well, I just, I gave him a little, little jab there. So that's have to suffice for today. All right, commissioners, is there a motion, please, on this agreement?
Chairman, I move that we approve the agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Guardian Alliance Technologies Incorporated, as presented by Captain Brian Robinson.
Second, Mr. Chair. Moved in second to approve the agreement as presented. Further discussion, commissioners? Again, thanks for the good discussion and kind of the, the responses that we got from the hard questions here. I'm glad that it was brought to the IT steering committee and they had a chance to review all of this. So it gives me confidence as well. All right. With that, commissioners, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, commissioners. Appreciate it. Appreciate you bringing your team here today.
Don't they want to say anything?
He's never been short on words.
Well, yeah, I, I was thinking more about the gentleman in the plaid shirt that's come all the way up here. We don't even know his name or. Oh, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
I thought maybe you were on your way to the detention center. They were going to lock you up. They just hadn't had time yet.
All right. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is board appointments. Mr. Balt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This is item number six on your agenda for consideration today. You have the memo of information, you know, using our typical process we use for these vacancies. I'll read it into the record. These candidates meet qualifications for consideration of each board that you're looking at today. There are two of them. The first one, commissioners, if agreeable to you, is the Airport Authority Board. Michael Muscarelli turned out September one, two thousand and twenty-four. Paul Bogamil, Joel Silverman, Michael Schwan, James McCormick, Kendra Lenhart, Fred Nayer and Charles Smith have applied. Action staff recommends that the commissioners consider the applicants and select a candidate for the Airport Authority Board to a partial term that will expire September one, two thousand and twenty-seven. Mr. Chair, I'll stop right there if you'd like to take action on that item.
Thank you very much. So commissioners, questions, comments, thoughts about the Airport Authority Board? If you would like.
I think we've got a pretty good selection, selection group of very qualified people.
That we do. Yes.
And as I recall, we have looked at these names. There was an earlier appointment to the airport board that we ended up putting the same person reappointing. We've seen these names before. Is that correct?
Well, not all of the names. I think some of them may have applied specifically for this position, some that may have applied for. Well, not all of the names. I think some of them may have applied specifically for this position, some that may have applied for another position. We asked them if they would like to be considered for this as well. They, they submitted their um application for this position. So all of these folks have applied for this particular Airport Authority Board position, which is under the jurisdiction of this commission for this particular appointment. So yes.
Are you ready for a motion?
Well, I'm gonna ask for any public comment first, and we have no public in the room. So Commissioner, yes, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint uh candidate James McCormick to the Airport Authority Board.
Second, Mr. Chair, and may I speak to that?
Yes, moved in second to appoint James McCormick to the Airport Authority Board. Now discussion. Commissioner Roth.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, again, I want to reiterate, there are very qualified people on the, on this list. Uh, James McCormick has a unique background in in that he was uh chair of both this uh Helena Citizens' Council and a member of this commission. So he has a unique background uh for uh local government uh in in a major way that I think would be a a real asset on the Airport Board.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would completely agree, Commissioner Roth. And we do have a excellent slate of candidates, and I would ask that we kind of keep the pool alive. And if we have another position that comes up uh that we engage with these folks and see if they're still interested, that I will support Mr. McCormick as well. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The next item or the next board is the Forest Vale Cemetery Board. Peter Schaefer has been serving at the pleasure since his first term expired August thirty one, two thousand and twenty three. He did not wish reappointment, but agreed to stay on until a replacement was appointed. Gary Long applied. No other applications were received. Uh, action staff recommends that the commissioners consider and select the candidate for the Forest Vale Cemetery Board to a partial term that will expire August thirty one, two thousand and twenty six. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Balt. Uh, questions, commissioners? Any questions? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would uh move uh to appoint Gary Long to the full term. That is, that is uh for the Forest Vale Cemetery Board.
Second.
Moved in second to appoint Gary Long to the Forest Vale Cemetery Board. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Balt. Okay, we are at the time our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public come forward, commissioners, thank you very much. We will stand adjourned.